City Council has been in an executive session where we have been discussing some pending litigation before the city. Our next item, and we have moved to come out of executive session now, our next item is communications. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I emailed council today about beautification day, as you know, is coming up in less than two weeks. Spoke to Greg Jones today, who's the executive director, just to sort of get an update on how progress is going with the event. He'll be here later on today to, or later on the evening to answer questions. But what I emailed you about today was donating money from the Luke's Fund, like we did last year. I think that we donated $500 last year to the beautification day project. And I am proposing that this year, since they're doing more projects and building on this event, that we donate $750 out of the appropriation for this year. So I just kind of need to get thoughts and comments from council and approval in order to do that. So.
I guess I would just like a little bit of information on what the 750 would be used for.
Sure. Well, I know that I have emailed council as to what their plans are for that day. I can give you an updated agenda for what products they'll be doing.
I know what projects, but I mean, it's all volunteer labor. So I was thinking the hard costs of paint, I mean, is...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, any supplies that they would need, or food for that day, different things like that.
I was wondering how much is food and how much is...
Okay. Well, I can, I mean, Greg will be here later if you want to ask him or find out, but I don't know if he has, you know, dollar-by-dollar breakdown as to what it'll be used for, but I can certainly ask him. Jim?
I just had a question. The Evelyn Luke's Fund was a finite amount of money. Do we know what's in that fund right now?
I'd say we had about 4,000, 3,000.
I think it's about, after this year's appropriation, there's about 4,000 left. Is that right, man?
About 4,100, I think.
4,100.
Other comments? Any other communications that anyone would like to share?
Thank you.
Yes, member Bishop?
Is the communication about lead paint appropriate now?
Sure.
I was gonna, okay. As people know, we were looking at the joining the lawsuit against paint manufacturers, and we did pass that last week. And at the time, we also said that, given that protecting citizens, especially young people, from lead paint is a fairly easy fix, i.e., with paint, if it's, we just want to protect kids from chewing on window sills, and then as the paint gets older, there might be dust. And so this kind of a simple fix in terms of just wiping off your window sills. And if there happens to be any lead pipes in the water system, in people's homes, or lead solder, a really simple fix is letting your tap run. So since this issue has been raised, and there is some sense that it is, you know, could be a problem in some people's homes, we talked last week, I would like to put forth a recommendation that we allocate, excuse me, some money to the health department so they can purchase pamphlets, et cetera, and take a more active role in educating people in the community about how to protect themselves, especially if they have young children, from the hazards of lead. And I kind of picked the number 500, and, but we could certainly, you know, lower that to 300 if council would prefer doing that. But it would at least give the health department some funds to purchase materials and maybe, you know, do a little more dissemination of materials in the outlying areas.
Do we know what kind of materials they'll be purchasing?
Well, I know that there are pamphlets. I know actually there are public service announcements and other things. So I talked with Chuck Hammer, and he said, you know, they could certainly use the money for that, and he felt that there were pamphlets available that they could purchase.
At the risk of not turning this into a committee meeting-type discussion, why don't you get together exactly what type of thing you would like to do? I would think the environmental committee would be a good way for it to be handled, but I think that...
Right. Yeah, I'm on it.
Maybe a quick meeting next time, and we can get it moving.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Yes, member Wild?
Communication from John Schmieding, I see I got it last week, about sometime this week. The next police community dialogue is going to be Tuesday, May 1, 7 o'clock to 8:30 at the Athens Community Center. He says, mark your calendars.
Okay. Thank you. Any other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Let's go to mayor first. Mayor Abel.
Sure. I have a brief report for you. We get the normal weekly report from department heads. I approved that today, so we should get that in the next two days. But we did send out a code officer both Saturday and Sunday. He worked four and a half hours Saturday and three and a half on Sunday morning mornings. We went to 33 different places. 26 of them did comply, cleaned up their litter. Seven got tickets. So we'll be doing that each weekend, even when it was raining Sunday morning. We were out, and they were questioning, "Do we have to do this in the rain?" And the code officer basically said, "Well, I'm in the rain. If you have to do it at a certain time period, you'll get the tickets." So that's what we did.
Comments? Member Wild?
I noticed there's a job opening for a code officer. Is that a retirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments to the mayor? Anything else? Thank you. To the auditor, Kathy Heck.
No report.
Law director Gary Hunter.
Would indicate in compliance with city council's request, the lead-based paint lawsuit was filed this afternoon in Athens County. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 1807 and ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII, traffic code, section 7, point 09, point 99. Member Bain is not with us tonight. He will be addressing this.
Mr. President, I move to table ordinance 1807.
Second.
We'd like to table this and discuss it again at the next regular meeting.
Just so it can be discussed by all members of council.
Right.
Motion and a second to table ordinance 1807. Is there further discussion on tabling only? Member Wild?
More than likely, we'll have another, although Nancy Baileywick being a city services committee, it might loop over to transportation, so we might be having a transportation committee happen soon to discuss some of the aspects of this.
Sure. Other comments? All those in favor of tabling ordinance 1807?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance 2407, an ordinance authorizing the auditor of the city of Athens to make income on transfers in the 2007 appropriation ordinance and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 2407.
Second.
This ordinance was introduced at our March 5 meeting, and it's simply asking for a couple transfers of funds. First transfer is from parking garage fund into the parking garage debt fund, an amount of $166,250, to pay, obviously, a debt payment on the parking garage repairs that we made several years ago. And the other transfer is from the East State Street TIF fund into the East State Street Debt Fund, a $300,000 transfer to pay toward our remaining $2 million debt for the construction of East State Street.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2407?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for second reading, 02707, an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations to Mark Weiner for property located outside the corporate limit but within a three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor subdivision. Ordinance 2907, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Ordinance 3007, an ordinance repealing ordinance 012503, closing a portion of Court and Washington Streets on the second Sunday of each month from April through November to accommodate farmers' market and local artisans. Ordinance 3107, an ordinance closing a portion of East State Street on the first Saturday in May, July, and October 2007 to accommodate farmers' market and local artisans. Ordinance 3307, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a building and rooftop lease agreement with the new PAR DVA Verizon Wireless. Ordinance 3607, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract to upgrade the city's telephone and computer networking systems, project number 228. Now for ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 3707, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 21 subdivision regulations, chapter 2103, application procedures for subdivision approval, and 21.11 definitions. This has been introduced by council member Bain. Member Phillips will speak to it.
Mr. President, this ordinance does two things. The first thing it does is it adds a section which states that any project that comes forward to be considered as a condominium has to meet the Ohio Revised Code standards for a condominium. And then the second thing it does is to clarify our definition of condominium in our city code. We discussed trying to deal with this further, and we probably, when we are done drafting the site plan review, will be able to include this in site plan review. But for now, we're just getting the definition clear and stating what a condominium is.
Further comments on ordinance 37? Ordinance 3807, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning table A schedule of block controls. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, this ordinance comes to us on a recommendation from the planning commission. We had been asked to consider the rezoning of the lower end of Court Street to make it be consistent with the rest of Court Street. In that discussion, it became clear that one of the stumbling blocks was the notion that the B-2D zone would allow buildings that were probably too tall for many people in the community to be comfortable with at that end of Court Street, and there were some infrastructure concerns. So we asked the planning commission to look at this. They sent back a recommendation to us that we lower the allowable height so that it would now be 50 feet or four stories instead of the previously allowed 75 feet or six stories.
Further comments? Ordinance 3907, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Appalachian Regional Commission for grant funds available for the construction of access roads. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this ordinance does pretty much what the title says. There is a whereas that we would add. Whereas, a new access road to the Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses is being proposed, as well as improving Circle Drive to complete the loop from Columbus Road to a proposed retirement facility. The mayor is authorized to submit applications and enter into agreements with the Appalachian Regional Commission and other agencies for grant funds and pursue other funding sources for the construction of these access roads. These are healthcare units that are proposed to be built. Access from Columbus Road and from East State Street will need to be developed, and the mayor is, we're just simply asking for authorization for the mayor to look for funding for those access roads. Mayor, did you have other comments?
I'll respond to questions. I mean, is this what this would do? Circle Drive is already a city street, so that wouldn't change its status, but the status of the access road, which would be where you exit from 50, 32 right now, is if you're going to East State Street, the access point would be directly across from that, and then we'd have a road approximately, I think, 700 or so feet that would go down to the Auto-Tech and do a cul-de-sac at the last property there. There's about six property owners that would be infected. In the estimate, I had Andy Makeup, which was about 350,000. I had him include sidewalk on one side.
And I assume that the developers would be obviously putting some money into this also.
That's why I'm seeking those other funds.
That's what the other funds are.
Anything else I can find?
Member Wild?
So these, this is not a platted road you're talking about for the East State Street area?
Not at this time, no. That would be part of the process we would have to do, is right now there is a 50-foot easement on the first five property owners, and then Holzer would have to grant an easement through the other area, but it's subject to the road design. Right now, all we have is an easement for the purposes of utilities.
And this is floodplain area?
It's been built up above the floodplain.
Okay. And the Circle Drive, that's a platted street as well?
That's a platted street.
Okay. And the access to that?
Unproven.
Unproven.
Well, these, the developer, as they build each property, from Sears, Abbey Carpet, the office building, and Parfitts, has been built at each stage. From there on, it would loop behind Circle Drive to hit Columbus Road again. That way, we'd have two access points and two ways of getting out. And if you're going to put a nursing home in there with probably assisted living, you're probably talking, what, 150 beds altogether? Two. That's, you're going to have about 115 probably full-time employees, and that shift to change, having them go two ways probably isn't a bad option.
I thought that extension was, is that built to spec? The extension from Sears and all those other places going to Circle Drive?
Yes, they don't like to have trucks there on it, but they were told to put it to specification. We don't have, we have cul-de-sac at the end for the fire truck to turn around at this time. But that's what part of the overall project would be, because I would much prefer to look at that area, because it wasn't curbed and gutted, but I would like to look at that as a potential, especially if I can get 80 percent ARC money for it.
Okay.
Other comments or questions to the mayor? Ordinance 4007, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands?
Mr. President, although we just received this ordinance this evening, it's the first time any of us have seen it, I would like to move to reconsider it under suspension of the rules.
Second.
There are four sections to this ordinance. In section one, there is a section appropriating money, $15,000 to the parking garage fund. That particular phrase is to pay property taxes on the parking garage, and as most of us know, those are due, so we need to do that. So that is the section that is going to require us to look at the whole ordinance under suspension rule.
You're...
Number Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry. You're asking us to appropriate over $1 million to the sewer fund and consider this without having heard anything about it beforehand?
Actually, well, you will.
I just think that conceivably, we would know when the property taxes are due and not be asked to consider things like this under, this rapidly.
Shall I tell you about the sewer fund?
Yeah.
Actually, that's just a, this is actually re-appropriating the $1,017,000 that was appropriated last year for the Columbus Road sewer line. When we came into 2007, it did not get re-appropriated. So that's simply a bookkeeping thing. There's no new money there. It just, everybody knew the money was there from last year, and it just didn't get put in the right place.
What I understand, I just happened to find myself talking to Ray, is that we had, it had been appropriated last year, then when we had that end of the year, unappropriate everything. It got unappropriated, and then we just missed it in the new ordinance to re-appropriate it. And it's to keep that sewer pump station project going. So it is a very important thing that Ray had told me about, heard about, I think, on Friday. Yep.
Okay, so, so if I remember, we zeroed out everything at the end of the year, and we were in a rush to do it.
And never put it back in the new budget.
And never put it back in.
Yeah. That's my, that's the explanation I heard from Ray Heasler.
And now we have to rush to put it back in?
Only if you'd like that project to keep going.
That project is underway.
Yeah. And...
How has it been going so long without it?
We have bills of $242,000 I can't pay.
That's when we noticed.
That's kind of, yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I see. Okay.
Okay.
I don't think it really got started in the fall, is the other thing. Most of that money wasn't spent until this year.
No, it started in January.
If we had spent all of that money before Christmas, we probably would have done it before now. And just for the record, the property taxes were paid on time.
Okay.
They've been paid. The problem with that fund is, you know, it's a proprietary fund that parking garage makes its own money. It has very, very small budget. So we use money from other account lines, and they need money in there.
So this is to repay?
Pay the bills, electric, gas, to pay other bills.
I'm sorry.
Other comments? Member Sands, is there anything else you wish to go?
I think the others are not subject for...
Emergency. Okay. We have a motion and a second to consider ordinance 4007 under suspension of council rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules being suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 4007.
Second.
Again, section one is appropriating $4,500 to the East State Street TIF fund. This money would be, and we'll see where that's moved around in the other sections. This would be to replace some of the landscaping material that died over the winter and the fall around the East State Street face of the community center. It's just a replacement. That we, we've talked about the large amount, the $1,017,000 for Columbus Road Sewer, $15,000 to repay from the parking garage to allow to repay some money that was borrowed to pay the property taxes. $12,000 to the garbage fund, which would go toward the purchase of a vehicle for our new position, a litter control officer, and $3,000 to that fund to pay for uniforms, handheld computer, other items that might be necessary for the application of that position. Section two takes that money from the TIF fund and transfers it to the recreation fund, that same $4,400 to section three appropriates that $4,400 into the recreation fund to allow it to be expended. And that's...
Further discussion on ordinance 40? Member Wild?
Okay, so the money, unappropriated money is going to the TIF, and then from the TIF to the recreation fund, and that's for landscaping?
Yes.
That's what you sent.
Right, it's going into a transfer fund, then to the rec fund, and then into the recreation fund to be allowed to be appropriated.
Okay.
The TIF fund works like the FEMA fund. When we receive that money, it has a specific fund it's supposed to go into, and then we transfer it out. When we get FEMA money, it's the same thing. We've already spent the money out of streets, water, sewer, wherever. We can't put it directly into those funds. It goes into FEMA and then is moved out. The TIF fund works the same way.
Okay, so are we transferring the $4,000 to the TIF fund in section one? Is that what I'm seeing?
No. We're appropriating it.
From the TIF fund?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And then moving it.
And the other question I have, okay, since you're answering questions, Kathy, is it really wise to zero out these things at the end of the year if we're going to have to, if we're going to miss things?
That's not a choice we made. That was the auditor's recommendation in our last audit.
Okay.
No, it would probably be easier for us if we didn't have to do that, but, no. The auditors asked us to do that.
Our recommendation or requirement, which is?
Well, there are three levels of comments we get from the auditors. I don't remember which one it was.
This is the external auditors, you say?
State auditor.
State auditor.
State auditors, right, right. State auditors asked us to do that.
Further comments on ordinance 4007? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4107, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with University Estates. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, 4107 is an ordinance to allow the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with University Estates. We certainly have all read in the media the various legal problems that there have been between the city, the Villas at High Point, the University Estates, the Ohio Club, and Richard Conard. And this is a settlement agreement to settle all of those issues. And we will be reading this three times next week at a special session for the second reading, and then the third reading will be on the 16th, and for passage at that time, University Estates. And the other parties have already agreed to this settlement.
Other comments? Member Phillips?
I just wanted to make clear that it's council's understanding that anything that isn't addressed in this settlement is still covered under city code. So this doesn't claim to cover every possible issue that could arise around this project, and that anything that isn't spelled out here would still follow our normal process and our normal laws.
And that will be reflected in council's minutes. Other comments?
Mr. President...
Law director Hunter?
Why, I'm not at liberty tonight to discuss specifics of the settlement agreement, although the settlement agreement is attached to the ordinance, so it's public record. But I would like to indicate that the settlement agreement does reflect four months' worth of effort in between the parties. Negotiations that went on were fairly intense during the last four months. The settlement agreement does take into consideration the delay in the development as a result of the LEACs lawsuit. It does take into consideration the fact that there was construction at the site prior to annexation, and in my opinion, the settlement agreement does set forth a revised development plan and schedule for the development of this very large 830-acre site, which is the largest development site the city has ever undertaken at one point in time. It is a full and complete settlement of all of the issues that are currently pending between the parties, and does provide for the dismissal of the lawsuit that is pending against the city. Other than that, as soon as the parties have agreed to a specific joint press release, we'd be able to talk further about specifics of the settlement, but the actual language is available for the public to review at this point.
Is there any other members of council wishing to speak to this ordinance? Member Wild?
If I remember, we took on the LEACs litigation before University Estates. Is that correct?
Took it on, excuse me?
We were working with them for LEAC, we took on LEACs before University Estates. Is that correct interpretation of that?
We, no. The LEACs lawsuit, the development agreement provided, the original development agreement in 2000 provided that the city would be the provider of water for the site. We were aware at that point in time that there was a federal statute, section 1923 U.S. Code, that provided that if rural water districts had, within their district, a right to provide water, the city could not oppose them. And so the development agreement provided that we would provide that water unless we were precluded by federal law. The city then undertook, was served notice from LEACs, that they intended to assert right to that area, and the city filed a lawsuit to contest that right of LEACs to serve the area. The ultimate result of that lawsuit was that the city was determined to be the area that could provide water in that area.
And the original development agreement of 2001 is still in place?
The original development agreement of 2000, I believe it is.
2000.
Is still in place. That is correct.
And the wellhead protection laws are still going to be followed?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Other members of council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this? Lance? Okay. Ordinance 4207, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into capital improvements project agreements with the cultural arts... improvements project agreements with the Cultural Arts Commission and declaring an emergency, cultural arts emergency. Member Patterson.
Mr. Preston, first, I'd like to ask the mayor if there's a need for suspension on this?
If you're meeting and then put it on the agenda, the same as you did the ordinance before, what we have to do is meet a deadline, I think, of May first, that this has to be at the Cultural Arts Commission, because they meet in early May.
Okay, so that's not a problem then.
And hopefully it will award them the funds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Preston, forty-two oh seven is a win-win ordinance. It's good news and good news. This is to accept the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in capital improvement grant from the state, and this money will go for handicapped access to the lower floor of Arts West, and we do have time for three readings.
They did. Other comments?
Can I clarify something?
Yes, member, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to ask, can you explain what is envisioned for this access?
Well, I'm not sure how far the money will go, but part of it is, there is no ramp or anything for the downstairs, and so to configure a path around the building is part of it. Also, the bathrooms downstairs are not handicapped access, so that's a part of it as well. I don't know if the grant will end up covering all of that, but that's the hope. Mayor?
The conditions of the grant require that we have, they put up twice as much as we do, but we have to put up twelve-five in doing that. But that twelve-five was included in our formula C D B G, because we budgeted thirty-eight thousand dollars in there for Arts West to do the gas furnace replacement, and then that left us a little over thirteen thousand, I think, which they've accepted is that would be the local match that's necessary. So that's already been budgeted and appropriated, but just, so the total project will be thirty-seven five at minimum.
Other comments? Member Wild.
Will that cover both the bathroom and the ADA, or just the ADA?
Architect hasn't told us yet.
But it may, very well. It's going to be close.
One off, the business law, will we tell us? On to a one-reading resolution. Resolution oh five oh seven, a resolution supporting the efforts of the National League of Cities by joining in partnership for working towards inclusive communities. Member Bishop.
This resolution was proposed a couple of weeks ago by the Community Relations Commission, and as the ordinance says, it is part of a National League of Cities initiative to just raise awareness of the need for welcoming and inclusive communities. And this, the Community Relations Commission also plays that role in this community to have programs that help welcome people and raise awareness. So I move to adopt this resolution.
Just a second.
Motion on the second to adopt resolution oh five oh seven. Other comments? Member Sands.
As I recall the discussion, the National League of Cities will actually be sending, if we adopt this, will actually be sending some people here to talk to us about activities?
I think, I think that was Cool Cities, actually, in, that was the Cool Cities Initiative.
So I'm remembering incorrectly.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this all we have?
Well, what we do is we pass a resolution, and then the Community Relations Commission and other groups, if they want, can develop programming around this. And if you remember, the Community Relations Commission already has a program that it is piloting, which basically puts community members and Ohio University students together. It's kind of a mentoring, have dinner together program. And so we would just be more aware of the activities that we have that create inclusiveness. We can send our programs into the National League of Cities. They have a website where they basically note which cities are in partnership, and, you know, you can share information. That way, we may get some good ideas for programs. They might adopt our, sorry, the kind of dining program. And the thing is that we can put up a sign, once we adopt this, that basically says Athens is an inclusive community, and I would recommend that. It just, it really shows our commitment to being, you know, a diversified and welcoming community.
Other comments?
I'll just add one thing.
Sure.
The president of the National League of Cities, who happens to be the mayor of Clarksville, West Virginia, was kind of the brains behind this. So, you know, they're close, and if we wanted a closer connection, I suppose the Community Relations Commission could visit him or something. So there could be that connections.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All those in favor of adoption of resolution oh five oh seven?
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been adopted. Announcements and other business? Okay, let's see, we've got a special session of council next week, so any members sponsoring an ordinance that wants to make sure that that moves forward? Have it on that. Are there any we don't want on next week's agenda? Have the clerk add all of them.
Is that Monday, the special session?
Yes.
Time?
Seven.
Seven.
Rules provide special sessions begin at seven.
Okay, and committee meetings?
Committee meetings can be afterwards, unless you would like to have one before, that will need to end at seven, and then you can go back into it afterwards. Okay, committee meetings for next week?
Transportation, two items thus far, street fair and traffic code discussion.
The business fair.
Oh, sorry, business street fair, sorry.
Sure, yes.
The usual finance. Anyone else? Debbie?
Planning and development.
I surprise.
I think we might be ready to talk about site plan review.
Great.
I'll have a bad communication.
No quick one about environmental to discuss?
Maybe we'll do it jointly.
Okay. Environment, then, yeah.
Sure. Any other announcements?
I do have one announcement. On the beautification day, we'll have a full budget to council by Wednesday, as promised by Greg. So, he stopped in, but he had to go.
Also, the street tour. When is it?
Oh, street tour, April fifteenth, so Sunday, begins at one o'clock. Pickup is in front of City Building here. Anybody who wants to go, it's one P.M.
Mr. Preston.
Yes.
I have an announcement as well, and that is, on Tuesday, April seventeenth, there will be the annual Public Arts Meeting at Arts West, an arts forum, and it's to bring ideas forward from the public of what they'd like to see happen, plus have a report from various groups of what has happened in the past year. So a hearty invitation for folks to be there. I do know that in connection with the twenty-five thousand dollar donation, Representative Jimmy Stewart will be in attendance.
Member Wild.
Carol, what time is that again?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
And we encourage people to go anyway, right?
Right.
I have, it's just been handled, handed, a notice of public hearing by the clerk. Athens City Council will hold a public hearing at seven P.M. Monday, April sixteenth, two thousand and seven, in these council chambers, third floor, City Building. The hearing is to consider a recommendation by the Planning Commission to rezone point six five four three acres located on East State Street owned by Ron McDade, from an M-zone to a V-three zone. Interested parties are invited to attend and express their opinions with respect to their...
Mr. President.
Yes.
Speaking of beautification day, reminded me of something I was going to say. Speaking of beautification at Athens, if anybody hasn't gone down by the River Schaefer Street and seen the cherry trees blooming?
Oh, they are.
They couldn't be any more beautiful in Washington, D.C. They're amazing this year. But it's been really warm, they're not going to last a long time, so go see them, please.
Go tomorrow.
Boy, all of the trees seem to, the hot days have sure taken us through spring quickly so far, have they not? Any other announcements? Our next item on our agenda is an opportunity for any citizen wishing to speak before council on any item that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to speak before council? I think you know our usual rules. We need your name and address, and please hold your comments to three max.
My name is Greg Broadhurst. I live at fourteen Granville in Athens, Ohio. Years ago, I was very instrumental in the preservation and protection of Athens Depot. Now, I've been by there recently, and lo and behold, it's falling into decrepitation.
Again?
Again. So I don't know whose responsibility it is in terms of following up on the contract to see whether those contract specifications are being followed, but I think that someone ought to take a look at it, because this is a city resource that many people put a lot of energy into preserving, and even at one time, there was talk of even the city taking it back. I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but I'm saying that it's not being taken care of, and it's just been used as a resource for something that I don't believe was the original intention of either the block grant in the area or the contract that was made with the developer. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I've noticed the same thing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council? CNN, and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.